Ready?
Four thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. The roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. Are you joining us for the pledge?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which exists. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Issues and deletions to the agenda, we have a few.
Yes, we have a few. We need to add J three. A revised apportionment report. Emerson Township is revising their L forty twenty-nine. Taking off their fire millage. For this year. It is the last year to collect it, and I guess they must have enough money that they're gonna take it off. The forty twenty-nine, so we need to refile with the state. I had emailed the um. The document that we need to send to the state to you in an earlier packet. It is uploaded on extra. Um, and then we need to add L, which is the airport meeting on the regular agenda. And we have to add M, which is the finance meeting on the regular agenda. I don't know how I grabbed the wrong template, but it didn't carry over, so we need to add those.
And uh, under J. J four. We're gonna talk about having the county closed on December the twenty-sixth. Unless Terry really objects.
What was the other one on our regular agenda? M what?
Um, so we've got L Airport, M Finance, but J three is gonna be the revised apportionment report that we need to send in.
Got that.
J four is gonna be for closed December twenty-sixth, the courthouse.
Okay. The agenda is presented. Support. By George, supported by Tim to accept the revised agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment? Old guy. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Robert.
Robert.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Yep.
Robert Baxter, newly appointed supervisor for Fulton Township. Um. I just wanted to speak with you. Just briefly, uh, something that was left on my desk. I took over first October. Uh. And it's important to everyone here, I'm sure, and it's close to everybody's mind when it comes up, and that's blight. Uh. Everyone has it. No one knows what to do about it. But. I was a trustee at Fulton Township for eight years before I took over this position, and. We struggled with it. We still struggle with it. Three years ago, we entered into. An intergovernmental prob- um, contract with county. As in other townships in the, in the county. Um. We turned our blight complaints into the county. Uh. We monitored how it went. Uh, it seemed to be going pretty smooth. Um, we were getting reports. Uh, monthly. Uh, seemed to be a lot of letter writing. Not much action. Then all of a sudden, about eight months ago. The reports quit. Then there was no communication with the county whatsoever. Our former supervisor, um. He tried to follow up on it. Um. Got nowhere. And then I took over, and. It was one of the things he'd left on the desk for me to follow up on. That's why I'm here. Following up. I need the commissioners to listen to the townships. If the county's gonna take our money. And promise us to enforce. The ordinance. We should expect some, something. Something. Even if it's. We're doing this, or we're writing another letter, or we got an attorney, or whatever. If you're gonna take the money. You should show us what you're doing. Um, we're not the only township that entered into this agreement.
No.
Nowhere. I've got two blighted properties in our township right now. That I have residents screaming at me. Why can't something be done? One of them should be a health, a health department issue, and they won't touch. When you got a guy hooking his sewer up out of the upstairs window. Running downstairs and into the sewer. That's a health issue. That's a health issue. When he's, when he's. Pulling motors out of cars. And doing transmission changes in the driveway, that's a health issue. So anyway, that's why I'm here. I need the commissioners to please look into this matter. See what the county is doing. The county has a blight ordinance. The township, our township rescinded ours because. We, we agreed with. The county to take over enforcement. If they're not gonna enforce the county blight ordinance. Then what do we got? And like I said, we're not the only ones. I know, I know we're not. That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, hang on a second. Thank you. This is, this is an issue. I hear about it. Every time I go to your township, every time I go to most of my townships. I don't know about the rest of you. I hear about it all the time. Our county has accepted thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars from these townships, and they've gotten. This year. They got letters till March. We were writing a letter weekly or biweekly. And that stopped. There's been. No communication since. Um, I know Ryan and I've talked about this. Ryan has had some ideas. Ryan's had some thoughts of ways that the county can move this ball forward. Um, and I know that you've talked with, with some other people within the county other than just me about this. You know, and. I think we owe, if we're gonna have this county. Blight policy. Then we need to do something about it, because this willy-nilly letting. People run sewer lines up to windows of their house. I mean, I, I know the properties he's talking about, because when I first became a commissioner and I went to the first township meeting I went to. I was given two addresses in. Poppy I to drive by, and I went by both of those, and I know your other one's in Middleton, if I'm not mistaken, right? These are blight in any way, shape, nor form. These are blight, and. That's what the blight ordinance and why Fulton Township paid the money to get in here is to get these things cleaned up. They're as bad now as they were when I started as a commissioner. Nothing has, yeah, they've probably gotten worse. I don't drive by them all the time because they're not on the main road. It's the roads that I drive on, so it's just. That has not gotten better. We have had some success stories, places that things got better. But they're few and far between.
Whose responsibility is it to, to, who do we call in the county?
Well, there's a team of people that work on them. I mean, there's the prosecutor, there's the, uh, Deandra was involved with it. Um, Bill Leonard's been involved with it. Those are the ones that I've had contact with, and I think they're the same ones that you've talked with as well. I mean, it's just, I just think that. If we're gonna do this, then let's do it. Um, and. And if the county's gotta put some money with it to give it some real teeth, then we need to do that. So the. People like Bob doesn't have to sit. And listen to people complain, because I think if we get those two cleaned up, you got another one in Poppy that you can just, as soon as that one's done, you, I mean, you're supposed to get two a year. I mean, you could take the next ten years. Would you agree?
Yeah.
In your township alone, just the ones that I know of. It would take ten years for them to get the worst twenty cleaned up in Fulton Township.
I think the town.
The president has the same property.
The residents would be. The residents would be happy just to see some sort of progress.
Yes.
Not regress.
Yeah.
And I also think, I also think I can't speak for the board. But I personally, as a board member. Would even vote to increase the funding from the township to the county. If we could see some results.
See real results.
If it took more money to clean this up. I think our residents would go for it. But they've gotta see some results. They can't. Year after year, just see the same places doing the same thing.
Or getting worse.
Yes.
See, I thought. Uh, my understanding on this was originally. Like, if there was a problem like in Fulton or wherever, your district. You would notify the county. We saw letters. They had so many days to do it in, and then the police show up. And they give them another so many days, and then from there. We clean it up and we put it down.
Five or six steps in the process. Before it even gets to a prosecution level.
Yeah.
And the reports I was telling you that we used to get.
Uh huh.
Some of them will get to the three, the third letter.
Uh huh.
Sometimes there was no contact because the, they couldn't get a homeowner, whatever. But we, we never got any results. No results. And that was the problem.
Yeah, that township alone. I know the one, I'll just speak to the one in Poppy. I know that address, and I know that. We, we went through all the mailings and the going and knocking on the door and all that stuff, and it still looks as bad or worse than it did before the process started. The process, our, our blight ordinance failed miserably on that property and for your township. I'm just, I'm, I'm just being honest, because I'm not gonna. Defend something that has failed miserably. And. Ryan can attest, I told him, you know, my feelings are, if we aren't gonna do anything, then give them their tax dollars. And then I feel that way. I feel, strongly feel that way, and that's not what the county's normally invested to do, is give back money that they collected towards something, because we, we've spent money doing things, but there's been zero results, so. We gotta either. Change what we're doing and get a process that has some real teeth to it and get these properties cleaned up, or we need to. Let these townships create their own blight ordinance or whatever they're gonna do, but I mean, you, you piggyback to the county, because typically, the county. Little bigger, you know, we're much bigger than your township. You've had all these townships together. You got a little more bite. Something should be getting done, and right now. Every one of us.
That's the exact reason we partner with.
I know it is. I've talked.
County, we don't have the resources.
Supervisor, I have this involvement.
Been fine. The one doing four anyway.
Everybody's disgusted. I hear about it. Five, six times a month.
I, I have a question on this. Do these people own this property, or do they rent?
The two that we're talking about, they are both owners.
Who's? Okay, I would think that they didn't, I mean, this is what I don't understand, because I, in my district. They make them clean it up, but they don't, I'm not sure who does cleaning up, and then they charge on their taxes. So if they don't pay the taxes, then they put it up for sale and they're gone. So that's why I don't understand why.
Well, it's, it's a very difficult situation when you got to approach a homeowner and. You know, I don't wanna do it.
Well, you shouldn't have to. You're paying us to do it, so.
Thank you, Reverend.
That's why we, that's why we hired the county.
Yeah.
I think you've made your point clear. I'm confident that something. Will be occurring within the county.
I, I just made a comment.
Yep.
I was, I've been of the understanding that the townships all individually adopted their own ordinances. So the county has a blight ordinance. That's news to me. Oh, I'll find that out for certain, but. Despite that. They set up, I'm familiar vaguely with the original deal, contribution of money and. Staffing is, dropped the ball to a certain degree. I don't wanna blame people here, but the.
Neither.
Seems to be a bottle, a couple of different bottlenecks that are apparent to me anyways, I'll just say. I know it's been an issue. It's been expressed here. Personally, I haven't, you know, spent time digging into it. There's a new guy starting in this chair in a couple of weeks. But I had some thoughts. We have, uh, we, the county's budget is fifteen thousand dollars for blight. We have an issue the other day that we're gonna try to get resolved.
Yep.
With the way I would like to see it done.
Mm-hmm.
If that's resolved that way, I think it should move quicker.
Well.
It's gonna cost a few more bucks, but. There's an issue that we need to explore it more, but the county has the money aside for that, and it's certainly on the radar, and.
That's, I think we can do. You, you are leaving, and we're getting a new person, but I just want these townships to have some form of assurance. We are. Somebody's gonna take a look at this and get, get a, a system in place that works, because this is not working.
It isn't that complicated. If you get the right people.
Years have you been paying that nothing has been done?
Pardon?
How many years have you been paying this money to have something done, and nothing has been done?
In March, we will be going to the fourth year if we resign the contract. Um, I'll just leave you with a final thought. The county approached the township with this agreement. We did not go to the, the county. The county came to us.
Yeah. This is the first I'm hearing about it, but I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, my support here.
Okay, consideration of the consent calendar.
What was the consent calendar presented for?
Moved by George, supported by Steve to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pushing past. Administrators report.
Okay, um. A week ago Thursday, I attended a meeting at Central Dispatch. Um, it wasn't a authority meeting, but it was a meeting with. Law enforcement and fire officials from the county. And the fellow who approved, you know, an amendment to their, um. Capital budget last meeting. Their contract had been reviewed, and it's been signed, and they had their kickoff meeting for the consultant to develop the request for, uh, proposal for the new, a new CAD system. Um. He spent about an hour, he and she, the representatives from the county. Or from the company. Discussing all the steps and the development of the RFP. Demonstrations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd been through this one time before in a previous, uh, job, and they seem to be well-prepared. They're very knowledgeable. They're the right people at the table there, so. Just so you know, that process is underway now, and, uh, you'll be hearing more about it in the coming months, but it was, uh, good to see that kickoff, and I think they've hired a good professional company to help get that right, so. It should work well for the county. Uh, secondly, I would note that, um. Received notice from the city of Alma. It's regarding. I F T facilities, industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. Uh, they approved in February. With Avalon and Tahoe Manufacturing. Have, they have now requested that the value of that be increased by seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars to a total of. Two million ninety-two thousand. I mean, it's up about seven hundred ninety-one thousand. They will be holding a public hearing Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at six P M at the Alma City Commission. Um. The county has any opposition to that, you certainly can attend and speak to it. I think it's less than five thousand dollars on the total levy here, so. It's not a huge financial matter, but felt compelled to mention that that was coming forward. Um, and last but not least, I would note that. Tomorrow, there's gonna be a meeting with some of the, uh, department heads and officials that handle cash transactions for the county. The treasurer will be present. They're gonna review a policy, a proposed policy, and then review the cash handling procedures. Um, that's gonna happen tomorrow, and if things look like they're ready to go operational, that policy will be in front of the board, uh, next meeting. So that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Where are we at on that, uh, road commission at large? Funding, um.
We received the.
We talked about, George and I, you and I talked about it. The, we talked about it at one or two different meetings now. We've talked about it since you've been.
Practices had it that the county has paid full. We received that. You're just recently, it was about seventy-two thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, I think the drain commissioner was here one day.
Yeah, wasn't it just last meeting, or was it the last meeting of the month last month? We just talked about it at one of the last two weeks.
We talked.
We just talked about this. The one, that's why, before you leave, I wanted to know where that stands.
Talked.
Go ahead.
It would be my. Go ahead.
I talked to Mark Kraft, the superintendent.
Okay.
Talked to the drain commissioner.
Okay.
This is something that they have done historically. I can't tell you when they did not do it. All right, that's Act fifty-one money.
Yep.
What's the county gonna do with Act fifty-one money?
It's not ours, it's theirs. What are they gonna do with it?
Exactly. But they take that Act fifty-one, one money. That we allow them to have. And when they fix culverts. Roads with culverts. Anything to do with a ditch bank along the road, the county has to repave the road, whatever they have to do, that Act fifty-one money goes into those projects. Therefore, the taxpayers themselves are not yet with, with a, uh. Charge, if you will, on their drain tax. So they just pay it out of that Act fifty-one money. And it's been doing that since. Nobody can tell me when they started it. It's been, just been a customary. I just propose that we just leave it alone, because it's, it's worked for all these years. Why should we dictate to the road commission to do something different if it's working? So that's what, that's where we left.
I would, I would just submit that it's common practice in County Salt up here that the at-large split fifty-fifty as the act requires. And that's my. That would be my intention as the administrator, unless I'm instructed otherwise, to just go ahead and authorize payment of fifty percent and send it to them with the, under Act fifty-one, and ask them to pay the balance. I don't, um. Bernie does not want to get involved in it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that he opposes it or agrees with it, but, um. You know, he works with them on a regular basis. All road commissions work with every drain commissioner in the state on a regular basis. But I can tell you it's common practice in County Salt up here that that's how that money is split. When a maintenance project is put on. Conducted by the drain commissioner. He declares a project, he sets up a budget. All that money. Is then collected through a special assessment. The county and the road commissioner require the split of fifty-fifty. Only in Clinton County, or in Gresham County's case, they're paying the whole thing. And. It's thirty-seven thousand dollars is roughly the fifty percent share this year.
Thirty-seven thousand, you said?
Thirty-seven. Roughly. Um, anyways. I'm just bringing to your attention my experience. That's not a common practice, and I don't know why we continue that. Thirty-seven thousand would go a long ways towards blight or any other project to have around here. Blah, 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 so.
Okay, thank you. George?
Um, I'm gonna get the count. Let's hit remember dates. On the fourth. Uh, Dennis, I, and the, uh, city manager from Alma. Henry went down to M dot to discuss our grant situations. Uh, for the airport. And are you gonna speak to that at all during your comments? You will. You, you remember more than I do of it, but. We, we had some, we had some good outcomes, and we had some not so good outcomes. The only outcome that I'll tell you what, what negative for us is that we talked about wanting to make a. Uh, extension on the runway. We can't get a grant for that. We have to prove five hundred. I think she said five hundred landings, something like that, to, to get grant money. So that's kinda out the window. But we did, uh, they've, they've been working for many years on, and on, on the, uh. On the runway approach. That would be, I'm not gonna tell you numbers, I'm just gonna tell you that it's. It's on the west approach, so that you would leave and go out west. Go on the runway, the north, the east-west runway at the end. And come on properly. Um. That grant, that grant has been kinda moved up, the way I understand it, to more high priority, which would be great. But Dennis will speak to those when, when it's, but I just wanted to say that's what I did. On the eleventh, uh, attended, uh, Hamilton Township. And. They're, they're, not Hamilton, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Lafayette Township. Lafayette Township, and they're working on building a new hall. And they're getting all of the bonds. Around for that, and they gotta buy a little piece of property. Uh, to square off, so then we got the right amount of property. Um. And then I went to Wheeler Township, where we. Once again discussed, uh, Beacon and Bridge. And, uh, the issues in Wheeler Township with the gas station. I'm happy to announce that they have started actually physically taking stuff out of that building now.
Everybody there the other day.
And so they're, they're doing that, and I was, I called Dale, um, around to it. Every Monday. Dale knows me, knows my number. He just says, "Good morning, George." Ready for me. Um. And he indicated to me that he felt very confident that that building would be down by Thanksgiving. Like I told. Wheeler Township. This is what I'm telling you. But you gotta remember the name of the country, a co- company. Around to it. I don't know if they're gonna get it done or not. I always tease, and I, I tease him on the phone about that too. He, he, he's not, he's not taking that teasing very well anymore. He's, no, it's gonna be done by, so we'll see. But that's, that's that. That's all I got.
Tim, did you have anything to report?
Yeah. On the November eleventh, uh. Eleventh day, eleventh month, eleventh hour. I went to a city commission meeting. Bob was there from Consumers Energy. He said he knew, he knows something.
Yeah, Bowser.
Bowser.
Very good guy.
Uh. And, uh, the city gave Consumer Energy the right to operate gas lines. For thirty years. And then on November twelfth, I went to Arcata Township. Uh. The New State M T A, I don't know what that stands for.
Michigan Townships Association.
Yeah.
Michigan.
What Township Association?
Michigan Township Association. The new president is Kevin Beeson, the.
Yeah.
Guy from Pine River Township.
Because.
The other, the predecessor, he died.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's not good.
He, he died at a wedding, and his daughter's, her son's, I know, is German. Um.
Which is pretty cool, but there's just less than, I think, thirteen thousand townships in the state.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen hundred, thirteen, thirteen hundred.
Twelve hundred and fifty.
Thousand. There's only eighty-three counties. What are you talking about?
Hundred and fifty-four, I think is the number of townships.
We have sixteen in Gresham.
Okay, uh. Then they had a lane this. Okay, November thirteenth, I went to the mental health meeting. Taylor Hirschman gave a presentation on survey of services. And she was happy because more people participated in the. Survey, and then they have an issue that the county has, uh, they're gonna be closed Friday, December twenty-sixth. But not Friday, January second, because it's the start of a new year. It's time to get to work, so. Okay, that's it.
Jim?
Um, okay, I, uh. Had a meeting at Bethany Township. And they are very busy with putting solar panels in. They're getting a substation. And, um, and the whole area is, they're doing, well, I don't know how many acres, but across from the township. There's probably. Three different sections that's gonna have the wind, the solar panels in, and then there's a whole area where they're gonna do a huge substation. So they're very busy and very happy about the money they're gonna be bringing in. And, um. Also, I had a meeting at Michigan Oaks yesterday, which was, I told some of yous about the flood over there. And when I first arrived, there was no water, and then after, I went early yesterday, and, um. So I was there just kinda going through my notes and stuff. They, uh, a girl came into the room and said that there was a water leak. And so, uh, finally I got up and looked outside, and I could see that there was water, thinking it was coming from down underneath the ground, but. Finally, they, um, they evacuated the whole building. Um, so they wanted us to hurry and get done and get out of there. And I took some pictures. I showed a few pictures to. And I took some pictures, I showed a few pictures to Steve and I forgot who else. Thank Angie, and did you see some of them? Because, anyway, it was covering, well, two roads, the main road coming into the area. At Michigan Works, I think it's on, I think it's Saginaw, Washington Street and downtown Saginaw, but it was a regular swimming pool there. So anyway, I got, I decided to get going and I left, and I'm not sure what happened, but I'm sure it was on the news last night. So that's kind of exciting. But anyways, the end of the, this is the last meeting of the year. And so some of the things that we talked about, I turned in my paperwork to Angie and she'll give everybody a copy, but it tells you some of the jobs that is opening up and the percentage of openings each job and what qualifications are. And they were telling me that forty percent of the, we have, it's a five counties, so it's Bay City, Saginaw, Midland, Isabel County, and Gresham. Sixty, or forty percent of the people, they do forty percent of people looking for jobs in Saginaw. And so the other four divide up the sixty percent that come in, but they were extremely busy. I was there early, I sat out front. I was amazed, not only are they busy, people looking for jobs, but they're doing training also. So that's kind of nice, if they're interested in certain jobs, they wait until they get so many and then they start training them for that job. But I'm glad to see that there's a lot of openings. I noticed two when I'm driving around, a lot of signs up looking for help, not only in restaurants, but now in the factories and stuff like that. So anyway, it's, and I've given the, my report to Angie, she'll give it to you this next meeting. But that kind of gives you an idea in different areas where jobs are opening and stuff. So, and that's about it.
Steve?
On the tenth, I went to New Haven Township. There was an issue that came up with a resident there. I've sent that to a few people that are involved, the sheriff. Permits, it's actually, it's a zoned, very, New Haven Township is zoned by themselves. Their issue, one of the issues is that they've got a piece of property that's zoned agriculture. They feel this person surrounds their property. They feel that they're running a commercial business out of there, a trucking business. That's, Township needs to figure that out, but they also have some blight questions with the amount of stuff that is being parked around the outside edge of their property, literally lining their property with junk trailers and vehicles and things that some of it has creeped over the property line over the years. So that's why the sheriff's involved in it, so anyhow, that's an issue that hopefully will be resolved so that, to some sort of satisf- satisfaction. Newark Township is the same night, went to Newark Township. They were pretty much done with their meeting by the time this gentleman talked to me before I left. By the time I got there, they approached me about two different issues, one that's been ongoing since before I became a commissioner, that I think with Ryan get helping, get this moving along, this issue can finally be resolved and dealt with. The county has an attorney that's involved in it. Hopefully, this issue will be resolved and it will be something I hear about every single month when I go to the meeting, because I think, once again, just like other blight issues, it is unacceptable that this is drug on for this month. Was the twenty-third, I think you guys swore me in, will be two years that I've been a commissioner. And this has been an ongoing saga for two years. That, that's unacceptable to me, but people can, violently zoning, state building codes, all kinds of things, and nothing happened. So hopefully, we're moving the bar this time. Also, another issue in that township deals with another piece of property that I know Tony has been on trying to get this resolved. Tony and the sheriff have been involved with this. It involves a property that they don't pay taxes on because it was once upon a time a church, and they still want to classify it as a church, but you have people who are living there, which is no-no. And if it's, it's not a church anymore, even though they gave it some name, but you have people, human people, human beings living there, that's not a, it's not a good, good situation. Supposedly, they're renovating it, and they're only going to do this for two weeks while they're, well, it's already been a week, and if you drive by there, if any renovations has occurred during the week, and they were only going to be there for two. So I think this is going to be the next chapter of an ongoing saga in Newark Township. The next night, I went to Alba. Alba is entering into a contract, they approved a contract to sell three parcels of land that the township owns to a business owner, which is a good thing in Bannister. It'll allow this person to create, it's a bar in Bannister, they want to create an outdoor space, give them room to expand their cooler and refrigeration units, which is wonderful. It involves where a war memorial is placed in town. And they, it was, I think it was kind of put there because there was a slab of cement where there used to be ice cream stand when my kid was, or my dad was a kid, and a soda pop fountain, I think they're going to move, the, the plan is to move all of that down to their park. They had received a grant last year from Parks and Rec, and they've done a lot of improvements to the park. I think it will be a much better location for this war memorial to be at the park, right at the entrance. I think it will be a lot, way more visible because the way they put this thing in, like I said, they used a slab of cement that was there. I mean, unless you know it's there, you got to look for it. Now it will be kind of a, at the entrance of the park, I think it'll be a lot nicer. They are renovating their new township hall, or property that they bought to be their township hall, and it's really coming along nicely. It's, it's going to be really nice. They've got some grant money. And then the sale of this property will help them also with some renovations that need to happen. And they, they have some pretty lofty goals. They want to be voting there this next year, which will involve Angie and their clerk getting permission from the state of Michigan and all that. So it, it's, it's nice, a new handicap accessible ramp, it is, they've made some vast improvements to what once upon a time was a gas station and a, and a laundromat, so that's looking nice. Last Thursday, the thirteenth, I was invited to attend the Healthy Pine River by Chuck Sandro, is that how you say it?
Sandro.
Sandro. They are trying to really, work with the farm community, they had a bunch of us come up and speak in front of different farm issues that directly affect the river. Because all of us know the Pine River is kind of a mess right now, and it is, it's, it's eye-opening when you look at the progression of the pictures of how bad the Pine River really is. And a lot of it is sediment, it is not all agricultural related, it's not all, it, it, there's a lot of issues with that river, but one part of it is, you know, agricultural runoff between the E. coli levels in that river have been tested sometimes where they don't recommend you get a drop of the water on you. Now that starts long before it comes into Gresham County because it runs through other counties first, but that's not a good thing. That one of our most recreational water body, bodies of water we have in the county is the Pine River. And it is so bad with E. coli at times that they don't want you to get a drop of water on you. Not, not, that swim in, and I'm talking about get a drop of it on you. That's bad.
Is that because of the CAFOs that are in our community now?
They, that, that was all discussed, but this, there's vast problems with this. There's a vast amount of problems, because think about how many, the whole Riverdale situation with raw sewage that was running into the river. You go up, yeah, we've, we've taken care of that problem in our county, and they're, they're working on that right now. If there's a problem spot, they're working on it, but you got to remember once you cross the county line, that's not Gresham County's issue. So there's, there's other places in the counties where the water comes in from, and they test at the county line and it's hot coming in, so it's not, it might pick up some things, but you got vast wildlife areas where you're getting deer and turkeys, and I mean, it, it, there's a lot of problems going on with this. So it, this is just one part of it, and they want to make sure that they're involving the ag community or the farming community in it so that everybody works together. It's nobody's working against each other. So I think it was a really good discussion that happened at that. Going back to Newark Township, if you haven't seen any of our deputies that were on a call the other night, make sure you, you know, shake their hand, or they had a real tough call the other night that involved several of our staff. I think there was six, six of our staff members out there. So if you see them, or you see Tom, you know, just, they're, they're working through it, and Tom is doing a lot of things that I'm, you know, happy to hear. I talked with him today, they've had an instant debrief, they've got, they've been in contact with psychologists to, to help work with the officers involved, so. But that's, those are always tough situations, and we can be thankful that all of our officers came away from it not harmed in any way, so. Well, I can't say anyway, you know, they've dealt with the shock part of it and the mental part of it, but it was a very, very serious situation, so.
And you can't talk about it?
You don't want to talk about it. So. That's it?
That's it, okay. Well, I didn't, I didn't have any meetings, but I got one tonight at seven, and I got Brownfield meeting on Thursday. That's all I got. Okay, moving on, iteration of new business, iteration of board appointments.
So I think I can, I can talk on this if you need me to. So, because I think Jim's letter is pretty straightforward. The reason why we need to get these appointments done, they're planning a hospital meeting, hospital authority the beginning of December, so we can't really wait until the end of December when most of these are coming up for inspiration, and we want Todd on board so that he can take the administrator position. That can be the first motion as far as to put, you guys are okay to put Todd to replace the administrator position for that hospital?
I saw a move that we appoint Todd Mogenberg to replace the former county administrator for a partial term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan, to appoint Todd Mogenberg to the Hospital Finance Authority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O is nay, motion carried.
And the next one I did advertise in the newspaper, there is an empty seat on the Hospital Finance Authority Board. So the only person that we had interested was Casey.
I saw a move that we appoint Casey Zainer to the Hospital Finance Authority.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim, to nominate Casey for the Hospital Finance Authority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O is nay.
And so Brett was re-elected as mayor for Ithaca, so if we can appoint him to the six-year term for Brownfield redevelopment and development.
I, I, I moved, we have, right, right?
Brett.
Brett.
Bob.
To the Brownfield.
Okay, I'll second that too.
Moved by Tim, supported by Jan.
We'll go thunder, Jan.
To appoint Brett for a six-year term on the Brownfield redevelopment authority and economic development corporation and hospital finance authority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O is nay, motion carried.
Brett's not on the finance.
No.
Not on the hospital one, right?
No, no, just Brownfield.
It's just Brownfield and economic, not the, not the hospital.
Right.
For him. Just so the, make sure the motion reads right that we just approved is.
Right.
Yeah, just two, not the third.
Angie got it right, it was me that's, so.
I just wanted to make sure, I want Brett going, hey, I didn't sign up to be on that one.
Okay. Moving on. Keegan?
Want to do this, file the nine pages you got?
The contract.
The contract.
You, you got to approve?
Brian might, Brian might want you to get this one done.
Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
Yep.
Quite lengthy. Yes. You never know the legal entanglement one might get into, or you're going to cover them all.
It was a well-written contract, I thought it was fine.
Has everybody had a chance to review it? I saw a move that we accept the contract with Timothy J. Deontay to be our new county administrator. This is a three-year contract that begins December first, twenty twenty-five.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim, who approved this contract, ran into this contract with Timothy Deontay.
We need to make this a roll call because it's.
I would, I would advise it.
Single most important head of the board, Commissioner?
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. So we got a new administrator.
A new administrator, two weeks from today, right?
Oh, we got.
Right, so I have today a small revision for the two thousand twenty-five apportionment report. As Angie already said, there was a forty twenty-nine that was revised and resubmitted, so I made the change on the report. And that change is in Emerson Township, and it can be seen on pages two and six of the report. Basically, they're just not going to collect their fire emergency services for this year. So, and I plan on going read back through the report or anything like that, I just wanted to make you aware of the revision. It's, that's the only thing that's changed.
It's the only thing that changed on those two pages, right?
That's correct.
I, I think they, they have a lot of money for the wind turbine.
Well, actually, the Gresham Emergency Services Authority collects the millage, and then they provide emergency services to that township. So they had this millage for, that millage was approved. And usually they put on their form that they're not going to collect any of that millage, but this year they put one mill in that slot. And I, I wasn't even thinking about it, I guess I'd just seen that they had a mill requested to be collected, so I assumed they were, wanted to collect that, but that was not the case, it was just an accident.
So do we need to approve the changes? Change.
Just to revise the portion of the report.
Okay, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the, approve the changes pertinent to the millage for Emerson Township.
Moved by George, supported by Steve, to approve the revised equalization for Emerson Township. Apportionment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O is nay, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Only, only. Is it true every other employee was for this except for Terry Ball?
Yeah.
Figures.
Five months.
Tony closed December sixth.
Yes.
Except the next one.
Yeah, usually we do this in January, but I must have been sleeping then, and we didn't, didn't do that, but we'd like to correct a mistake. If nobody has any objections, we.
I, I make a motion to close the courthouse December twenty-sixth.
I'll second it.
Friday.
Moved by Tim, seconded by Jan, to let the county employees off on December twenty-sixth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O is nay.
Okay, I think we come to that portion of the meeting. I think it's time to move on to the airport. And go into the airport meeting. And so I would move that we close the regular meeting and proceed to the airport.
By George, supported by Tim, to suspend the regular meeting and go into the airport meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, um, I sent in the, uh, normal report, um, that I provide and, uh, probably some, just throwing it up here. The highlights from the report probably, um, starting on October first, which is, uh, this report is for October. We did have a jet in, uh, and, uh, they actually, they're scheduled to be in at six o'clock, but got delayed. Went coming in eight o'clock and, uh, they ended up hitting a deer on the run. So.
Another one?
You. Well, I probably mentioned last.
Yeah.
But.
It hit the farm.
Hit the farm, correct. Yeah. So the issue that, uh, uh, we haven't had a collision with a deer on the airport for quite a few years. So that gets into the number of deer that we have at the airport. Uh, each year we manage the deer. Uh, we have certain hunters that, uh, come to the airport. Uh, we actually provide them with a hunting pass that has to be on their windows, uh, of their vehicles and we collect, uh, you know, a disclosure old harness agreement and stuff at the airport. Uh, but the DNR tells us that if we shoot forty percent of the does, population will stay the same. So, uh.
Or shoot fifty percent.
Wow.
A hundred percent on the airport.
Yes.
They don't question, they, uh, so what's forty percent? If you don't know how many there are.
Well, in the spring we might have two hundred deer. You know, on, out in fields around.
Does the DNR issue you permits? Like they.
Yes, we can get those. In fact, I just talked to the DNR today.
Okay.
Of getting some for, uh, for December.
Yeah, for the late season.
End of the year and if we need some more. Um, so during COVID and stuff, we didn't even allow deer hunting just because everything was shut down. Um, but, uh, and prior to, uh, COVID and stuff, we had deer hunters that were mostly, um, trophy hunters. So we've changed the mix of the people that are hunting. They will shoot, uh, trophy or go after trophy deers during bow season. But they're also meat eaters. So unfortunately, uh, so we've been killing a lot more does recently. So, um, so.
Will the DNR have some of their like sharp shooters come in and, and use that for, um, to.
We, we.
For a place where something.
Donate, uh, the deer to, uh, there's a place, uh, processes on, uh, Perrington area. Um, the USDA has a program. Uh, USDA, uh, will come at night with night vision.
Yeah.
But you have to pay for the processing involves deer. So it's probably a hundred fifty dollars per deer and it gets donated to.
They won't, they won't allow you to take them to, uh, uh, one of the free processors?
Uh, yes, you can.
There's one now in Carson City.
Up the.
Market Carson City.
But I think they just charge a flat fee for everyone they shoot. So, but we've been trying to use our local hunters. We've got guys that have hunted at the airport for a number of years. So, um, each year we try to restrict the number. Uh, so once we get to a, a number, this is like, this is the past thirteen, but usually it's twelve because we have five different locations where people, uh, hunt and they all kind of communicate and stuff. So that really starts in September and, uh, we do have violators. Uh, people come and say, well, I hunted here three years ago. I go, well, maybe you did, but we don't show you on the record. So.
Doesn't say you had permission.
Yeah. I mean, the other day.
Once you got it for a lifetime, right?
Thank him in the other day and he had a, a hunting pass from two thousand eighteen. He thought it was still good. So, so anyway, he was hunting a big deer. So.
A question for you on that. Is there any way like at a certain time of the year that you couldn't just round all these deer up and take them to another state and drop them off?
Yeah.
Well, who's gonna pay for that, Jan?
Oh.
Who's gonna pay for that?
I said for years, they want more in the U P. County can take ten thousand of them, we still have them.
Yeah, be nice.
Anyway, so we're good to have that accident, which luckily a twenty million dollar jet didn't get, uh, damaged. So.
Good.
Um, I think Mount Pleasant Airport last year had three deer strikes with some major damage, some airplanes. So we've been very lucky, but, uh, uh, well, we're, we're continuing to, uh, try to help that process out. So, uh, anyway, uh, that same jet was in, they bought four hundred gallons of Jet A. So, yeah. Anyway, um, probably the next major thing was, and I probably mentioned it last month, is on the third, we had some people come into the terminal at one thirty in the morning, uh, steal some items. Uh, we had some money that, uh, is in a wall cabinet that people, when they buy pop or something puts in, uh, and had a personal security camera in there and they took that, plus a bunch of kitchen items like trash bags and soap and uh, some other stuff, uh.
They're gonna be clean and tidy thieves anyway.
Yeah, anyway, uh, we also had a jet in, uh, that, um, they bought five hundred thirty-five gallons of stuff. So, uh, the police, uh, we called the sheriff, uh, we got notified on the cameras. Um, we still have a project, uh, for security at the airport. They, it was supposed to happen in October, but it's been postponed to, uh, to November here, sometime maybe December.
You know if they've submitted that for facial rec? That's pretty, actually it's fairly clear picture.
Yeah, the sheriff department has it.
Okay. And I would think you'd be able to get. Something out of that. It's a pretty clear picture for a profile.
Yeah, yeah. So that, uh, we got a still image of that before they took the camera and hooked it. So, anyway, um, and we, like I said, on the fourth, we had a jet that also gets some, uh, uh, fuel. Uh, again, that was for homecoming. I mean, they come in for that. Um, so I, I, I don't know. Some of that's just kind of what, what, what kind of happens each day during, uh, each day of the week, uh, at the airport. Uh, some other jets were in. Uh, we still got some issues with, uh, Pappy lights, our precision, uh, Pappy lights, uh, runway two seven, um, is now working, but we still have issues on runway nine. Uh, probably the, uh, see here. Let's see. Other than, uh, we spent quite a bit of time in October cleaning up, uh, brush and finishing up some, uh, activity, um, down there on Eli Highway that we had cut trees, uh, uh, a few years ago and we tore the stumps out and, uh, we got all the stumps and, uh, brush and and wood picked up down there. We probably picked up, uh, I bet about forty bucket loads of, uh, oh, sticks after you clean everything up. It's never perfect. I think the last picture in that, uh, stuff I sent, uh, that's the field. It's ready to be put back into production. So, uh, other than that, um, the statistics I provided there, um, uh, kind of gives you a little better feel. Uh, we're fourteen, uh, days better for, uh, weather-wise at the airport of fuel being sold compared to, uh, previous, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, so, um, we'll see what the next two months, uh, uh, happens there. Fuel were, uh, through, uh, October were seven hundred, uh, gallons ahead on Jet A uh, compared to the previous year, twenty-two hundred gallons ahead of sales on hundred low lead. Um, but I added, uh, twenty twenty-three in those two charts to give you a little better idea of the Jet A. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, we sold almost twenty-two thousand gallons and twenty-four, twenty-seven thousand gallons and we'll probably, uh, uh, be probably twenty-eight thousand for twenty twenty-five. We've already, uh, sold, uh, I think over a thousand gallons this month. Um, and you can see we sold fifteen thousand gallons on a hundred low lead twenty-three. This is for the new fuel farm and the county took over. Twenty-one thousand, we're probably going to be, uh, twenty, twenty-five thousand. So ten to twelve thousand gallons more compared to previous years. Well, you can look through the numbers there. Uh, there's a five-year, uh, history here too. You can look at that. And then just in some, just took some photos, uh, page one there, that's, uh, uh, some brush pile, uh, on the north end of Eli Highway that had trees there. It got cut down. The brush come back up. We cut the brush. Um, there were some stumps in there. We ended up, um, taking the stumps out, um, and burned up the brush around that. But once we started, uh, I got some photos in November here, but, uh, we, um, there's a bunch of junk under all that stuff there, all under the grass. There's a bunch of concrete and stuff. So, uh, uh, we're working on getting that cleaned up and that concrete moved out of there. Same time we were working on a, a small ditch, um, shallow ditch, um, by the North South runway. It's not very long. Uh, we end up getting, getting that cleaned up, uh, cut the trees and stuff on that. Then, like I said, we finished the burning of the brush piles on Eli Highway. And, uh, so, uh, when we cleaned up the small ditch, got that all taken care of. Then on page seven there are some of that stuff we dug up, uh, where those, uh, concrete is. That's the stumps coming out. And, uh.
Was that a like historical building site by some?
Well, I.
And then?
Can't really tell because.
Yeah.
There's, there's some old concrete in there, but there's some like, um, pylons in there with rod in them. So that wouldn't normally.
That old.
Building site.
Oh.
But there was, uh, junk, uh, looked like, uh, one of those tub washing machines from way, way back down at the bottom there. So we pull all the junk out, uh, some pictures for next month, but we pull all the pitchers out, uh, all the junk out, pull all the, all the trees and stumps have been, and we pull all the concrete out. So we're in the process of removing the concrete and moving it off site. So, um, anyway, um, our, most of our field operations, you know, stuff, um, probably done for the year. So, um, we're getting ready, ready for hill plowing and stuff. Um, George did mention on the fourth of November, we did go down to the state of Michigan, uh, Aeronautics Division. Um, they call it a, a MAP meeting, which is basically a meeting to go over all our projects, where they're at, what projects we have coming up, look at our five-year plan. Um, I think everybody is aware that we got approval, uh, and we bid it out last March to redo the taxiways between all the T hangars. Um, and it was scheduled to be done in August, but we didn't get the funding to October ninth, I think it was. So, um, that is not put off till next spring because to keep asphalt warm enough to form good asphalt uh, late in the season and the contractor and the engineering firm don't recommend we do that late in the season like that. So it'll probably be April or May before that project is done. Um, when I came here, worked at the airport, uh, um, three-point aviation twelve years ago, that taxiway was on the list to be done. And so maybe after thirteen years we'll get it done. So.
Finish.
Anyway, that's.
See the fundings there now.
The funding is approved, but they, they go through the, uh, what other projects we had in the five-year plan. I have some minutes that they provided. I'll share next month for the November report, but, um, the taxiways is our next project that's already funded and approved. Next one will be, uh, updating the lighting. Uh, that's been, uh, kind of a push by the, uh, airport authority. Um, I mean, the Michigan authority, because our lighting system is quite old. One of the problems we have is that all our equipment that, uh, runs the lighting is in the basement of the terminal. And, uh, most, any airports that make any changes, they move all that stuff into a separate prefab building out away from any other buildings and all the lighting, all the equipment's in there. They don't have to go into a terminal. They can go right to that building if they need to, need to do some maintenance. So that's in the plans to move that equipment out when we redo the lighting. And at this point, they're scheduled to, um, work on design work and that. Uh, the bases will probably stay the same and just redo the stuff above ground and lay new cables down. Cable's been in the ground over twenty years. Um, we've had it checked to four or five years ago, um, for, uh, to see if we're still getting good current that pass or we wouldn't have been able to put fuel farm. So, um, anyway, um, so that's, that's one of the next projects. Um, uh, and that's just for runway nine two seven, which is our main east-west runway. Um, they're gonna, they want to move the eighteen three six runway back to twenty twenty-eight. Um, so, um, so there's some other things tied to that. There's some guidance systems and stuff that they want to redo during that whole thing. Uh, we did want to add the, uh, for safety purposes, a parallel taxiway down to runway nine. Um, so, um, that's most likely going to be after twenty twenty-eight probably, uh, if we can get it on the agenda and get approval for, uh, funding it. It's a safety issue. So, um, um, because if you want to, the winds out of the east and you want to take off to the east, you have to go down to runway nine and fly into the wind. But that means you have to back taxi on the main runway. And that can cause problems, which has been demonstrated, uh, with some other airports with, uh, accidents. So, um, other than that, uh, um, we got, uh, three-point aviation, this last week started, uh, two ground schools for new students. One's in Claire. Um, that's tonight, six o'clock. And then, uh, then that Thursday, we have a, uh, here in Alma taking ground classes. So we normally do it once or twice a year. This year will be, this is the second time we've done classes. Um, it's a total of being about twenty-four students of those two classes. Um, we got twelve in this class, uh, combined with the Claire one. So, and then we'll probably do another one next spring. So, um, so from here I have to go to ground school class to help the instructor up there. Um, and it's ten weeks, three hours a night. So runs into January. Well, actually February in some cases because we take off Christmas and stuff. We don't, we take off, so we don't have to be there on the twenty-sixth or whatever. So, anyway, I don't know if you have any other questions.
Um, last spring, the whole ag land rent thing came up at one of our meetings. We'd already had a contract with an existing farmer and we talked about we would revisit it. Crops are harvested now for this year. So I just wanted to put that out there that we need to put that out for, for bid to, however you guys are going to do it through the USDA office or however, we did it last time with the, the county farm out here, um, to accept bids, just so that we can, I mean, I know there's restrictions. They can only grow soybeans and hay and.
Ah, there's, there's actually.
You've gained some extra land this year. So you were talking about it and jogged my memory that I wanted to bring that up. So.
Yeah, usually, uh, we do that in the first part of the year.
Okay.
I think the lease runs through the end of.
Probably December thirty-first would be my guess.
Yeah, so.
Um, I just put it on the horizon so that it can be put out to bid and we'll see what, what happens with people.
Right, yeah, yeah. There's some, yeah, some. There, there's some restrictions that we got to be very careful of because they're on airport property and we got planes coming in, crossing runways and all that stuff. So surprising people.
Just put it in the bid and you've got to be familiar with it.
Exactly.
Very dangerous situation if you're in the right.
Right, right. And, uh, normally, uh, some of that stuff is done after hours out there. Right, and, uh, normally, uh, some of that stuff is done after hours out there. Oh, cause they're farmers, yeah, and weekends are after hours, too, so. The ones that have been there have been there for a number of years, and some of them own property around the airport, so. Uh, anyway, uh, yeah, we have that on the radar, so. Anything else?
Thank you. Appreciate it, Dennis.
All right.
I make a motion to go into the, uh, finance.
Meeting.
Supported that.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to go.
Moved by Tim, supportive of George.
This is what I was gonna say.
He said that, I remember, yeah, he said it, that's what he did.
Oh, Lord, um. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Or nay. Financial.
Hey.
Strangers.
Should be good.
Up here, Todd. Are using you here.
Look, you know. To be sure, simple and sweet.
Well.
Remember, only month one of fiscal years.
Yeah.
Not a whole lot of trends yet. You have, in prior year packet, cash balances, which looks like historically have been provided. So you see where we are at the end of October, um, just to pull the, or sorry, the general operating accounts. Little over, almost twenty-one million, twenty-point-six million is what we have as of ten thirty-one, so that's in there for. Your review. You have likewise a check register for the month. And Steve had a couple of questions that you had answered earlier.
Yep, and I, I just want, if anybody had any questions on the. Right, um, one that's two hundred and forty-three thousand eight oh nine eighty. That was multiple, uh, invoices. They took the first one, because I was like, what in the world for online phone services? Costs us that much? That's actually the program where we purchased all, that we approved for them to purchase all the body cams, the car cameras. And this, but it just the way the thing came up, if it had said body cams, probably wouldn't have thought about it, but came in as online phone services, and I was like.
There was the last description it pulled, which was.
Yeah, well, support. Yep, and then the hazard. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, one heck of a phone system.
Yeah, one heck of a phone system, and then, uh, I asked about the hazard pay that is, uh, commissioned on aging, they're still getting it left over from COVID. It's a grant.
It's gone through the area agency.
Yep, yeah.
They will not change it.
Yeah, so, cause I just was curious.
We're stuck with it, but we don't even know why. COA, they don't even know why. It's an area agency, uh. How they, how they charge it out, and they refuse to change it.
Then I had a question on reimbursing an officer for uniforms, and I've been advised that it's been handled by the sheriff. That it won't be happening again, because I was a little stumped as to why. We're allowing people to buy their own clothes, and then. There's a process, there was a very well documented process when I left there, so.
This is an interesting one. Genesee County Medical Examiner cremations. It's only five hundred dollars. Did, so, did the medical examiner? Come from Genesee County?
Yeah, our medical examiner, all of it.
Medical examiner is that.
Everything's informed.
Well, yours no. I don't know what that particular bill is for, but, um. That's medical example, maybe he sent them out for cremation, I don't know.
I think they do, but they, they, they don't do them, but they have it, they have it, yeah, and there's a, I think that's per one, that should have been one, I think, is five hundred dollars.
Probably they held a body for long, and that's what they, they had to do, it was, it was probably, I'm assuming, unclaimed body.
They hold them for so long.
It was only, it was, I'm sure it was a lot longer than you think. That's what that had to be, it's an unclaimed body. No.
But claim, claims for the month, slightly shy of six-point-six million dollars, so.
Jan, you got any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The piece that is in your packet is the profit and loss statements by fund. Um, for the month of October, which, like I said, you're one month into this, so not a whole lot of trend here, so. Obviously, we're under budget on everything, which is a good thing, but. You're just looking at total revenues, total expenditures by, by those major funds, so, you know, biggest one, obviously. It's the Port's General Fund, you know, we're sitting there, bottom line for the month of October, you know, three-point-seven million dollar. So-called profit. Increase in net assets, so.
Didn't say, we're gonna spend it.
Like I said, month one, there'll be expenses that will come along to, you know, eat into that, but you can take a look, there are. Couple, three pages worth of funds, I'm looking for the same thing.
I forgot, there was one that I did not send, that I had marked, that I forgot to send to Becky, um, earlier today, and that is for the Animal Control One. Oil change, um, Pioneer Quick Lube. Hundred and ninety-one dollars, just seems like.
Not anymore. I just, I just changed the oil in my transmission on my car, a hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Yeah.
That's just to change the oil in the transmission. That wasn't included in oil change.
For oil?
Names for a transmission.
Transmission, yeah.
My transmission was up to that even.
If that was the case.
I mean, if it was other than just engine oil, but I was like, if it pulled just the first.
You got multiple points in town, the wage.
Yeah, that, that.
I can take a look and follow up to make sure there's something more that, if it wasn't, yeah, I'll.
Gotta get wipers and stuff like that. Who knows?
That's not unusual.
What else?
That is it.
Yep, for the end of the year, for the audit, so that kind of wouldn't. Mid-January, we'll.
Even going, audit will start and we'll go on.
That taken care of, so.
We'll go on. Hopefully with all the work that's been done prior to you getting here, that it'll all be in order and. All smoothly, we'll be ready this year on time.
We're, we're working on that, so yes.
That would be wonderful.
With Woodhill Group with their help, yeah, so it makes it for an easier transition, so. Thank you all for allowing for that, otherwise it'd been a fun time.
No. We want you to be with the.
Have a holidays.
We don't want you behind, we, we don't want you behind the game. Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, uh.
See you at seven.
There you go.
I'm Turner. How are you doing? Come on up. Come on down.
Yeah, I agree with Todd. Woodhill was a good find. My usual reports were submitted this month. Not a lot of change, what you usually see, but if you have any questions on those reports. Please ask. Investments, there wasn't a big change.
No.
See that?
They're steady now.
Yep, they're steady.
Stupid.
Not many transfers now, any, not anything substantial, that changed a lot when we did the district court change. So, everything is pretty much the same. But Ryan stole a little bit of my thunder when he talked about the meeting tomorrow morning. I was gonna discuss that. We've got a. Cash handling procedural meeting in the morning, which I think is gonna be well received, hopefully, but it's just gonna. Get everybody on the same page and maybe just answer any questions that anybody's got. We're gonna make some changes. Woodhill has helped a lot with that, and. I think it's gonna be a good thing going forward. I also wanted to mention, uh, Emeraldy, my chief deputy received the forty-under-forty. Award, also John Rayburn, Parks and Rec Director, received that, and, uh, we're. We're proud of him for that, so just wanted.
It's a, it's a business group in the county.
It's for young, emerging leaders in the county.
They're under forty years old.
Yep.
What's the other four?
There's forty chosen in, um, let me see, what is it? Claire, Gladwin, Greshit, and Isabella, and Osceola Counties, forty of them chosen, under forty. Of the emergence, emerging leaders, and.
We got.
Yep, we got two of them.
We got youth around here.
Yeah. So she's doing a great job, and I wanted to give them, give them some props for that tonight, so.
Probably because of outstanding leaders.
Mm-hmm. It's the Mid-Michigan Forty Under Forty Award, which is the initiative aimed at celebrating and recognizing young. Professionals under the age of forty, who have demonstrated remarkable achievements and contributions to their commu- communities, excuse me. And, um, it's the Middle Michigan Development Corporation, and then Greater Greshit is also involved in that, so. They, they did a great thing. This was the first year that they actually, actually had a, uh, an awards banquet, I guess you'd call it. Shall wouldn't you? Yeah, in Greshit County, so it was very nice. They held it at the Masonic Home, and, uh, it was well attended.
Jerry, uh, I'm gonna wanna put you on the spot, but I'm going to, I just thought about it, and I should have asked you earlier when I was up there.
Okay.
Liquid tax fund, um, do you know what we, just about what we have in there now?
In.
The liquid taxes.
It's about. Little over five.
Five.
With the I C S and what is in the bank.
Do we have any issues with this, uh, lawyer that's going to the Supreme Court of the United States, and he's trying to?
Well, it depends on what the Supreme Court decides.
But what, what, what is our exposure? As, you know, he's trying to get all, he's trying to, he's trying to get fair market value back to the person that was delinquent tax, now I don't agree with that at all. But that's what he's.
No, that's gonna be a really bad thing if that happens, so.
Yeah.
Um, it depends on, you know, what they award him, if they award him anything, how far back they go, it's our exposure.
Well, I could take that delinquent tax fund and blow it up.
Our exposure to the, the ones thirteen through twenty, you know, we already gave them that number, but now. Fair market value, yeah, it would. I did a spreadsheet this morning going back to two thousand. Twenty, when the Raffielli decision was made, and, uh, so if you want.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was gonna ask you that, and I'm just, went out of my mind when I was on, on other things the other.
Yeah, M A C T was looking for that information, so I actually just emailed a spreadsheet.
Okay.
This morning on that, so if I stop up, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, cause.
That information.
Something we gotta be aware of, that, uh, but if it goes bad for us, it goes bad for everybody. And, and, no, we're gonna be exposed, but we're not gonna be exposed nearly to the effect that many of the southern counties are gonna be.
Right, we would be, depending on the years, how far they went back, if they just went back to Raffielli, we would be, uh, exposed, but we would be okay.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but I'm just looking at who could get hit.
Yeah, yeah, it'll.
Well, just want to kiss Messengers to be aware of it. He, he goes here soon, right before the United States Supreme Court.
Early twenty-six, yeah.
Cause he hadn't been getting anywhere here, so he's gonna go.
But the Supreme Court is gonna hear it, so.
So they're gonna hear it, so. I hope, uh, hope we got some good, you know, listening ears on that side, like.
We're, we're rallying the troops, so.
Thank you.
But if anybody would like to come up and talk about that with me, I'd be glad to.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, you wanna suspend the meeting, go back to the regular meeting?
I motion to, uh, suspend the finance, leaving go back. Even regular, I mean, do, do we pay the?
For the, for the purpose of paying the bills.
We, we need to pay the taxes. And there are.
And I'll, and I'll support that. Moved by Tim, supported by George to exit the. The financial meeting, go back into the regular meeting for the purpose of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay, motion carried. Any, uh, additional public comment? Nah. You're gonna motion adjourn?
Or public comment? We must, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll support that. Moved by Tim, supported by George to adjourn, while the meeting adjourned five fifty-four twenty-eight seconds.